Wilson, are we ready?
We're ready.
So, we are back from executive session at 9:26 PM where we discussed personnel and contracts. Sorry. Okay, and we are picking up on the agenda with K1. I need a motion to accept with regret the resignation of Mr. Mark DiFilio, social studies teacher, effective no more than 60 days from the date of resignation, and authorize the administration to post and advertise if necessary for the position. Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. I need a motion to hire Brent Graham as the head varsity baseball coach per the terms and conditions of the current agreement between McGuffey School District and McGuffey Education Association. No move. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Coach Felton? Do you have lasers? Mic, is it on? The mic on?
Yeah, I can hear it like an echo. You're not hearing it?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Mr. Wilson also restored heat in our room while you guys were gone.
Thank you.
He's now working on hacking into the Pentagon, but that's for a whole nother day. All right, here we go, here we go. So, in my first five years here, Brent was a baseball player, and he was probably the best baseball player we had during a tenure that we weren't very good. Then, we made a move, and we got a lot better, and I'll let Brent talk to you about that. And now, as my, Brent went on and played for Penn State Fayette, where he was all conference. He was all conference here. He fits a lot of the things that we really look for in a coach. I think he's gonna connect with our kids right away. He's very gung ho. Since our final interview, I had to kinda tell him to whoa, not go. So, he's ready to get rolling, I'm sure of that. It's my pleasure to introduce our new varsity baseball coach, Mr. Brent Graham.
Thank you. I can't be thankful enough for all of you, and I appreciate the opportunity to be your varsity baseball coach. Been a big dream of mine for a long time, and when you're a little kid, you think you're gonna play in the majors, and, you know, this is about as close as they get. So, I appreciate that, and I really look forward to kinda picking up where Coach George Link left off. He did a wonderful job with the program, and very thankful to fill his shoes. And I think that with myself and our coaching staff, we'll, should definitely be able to put, you know, put McGuffey baseball in the elite Whipple team type of category. So, you know, one last, you know, thing is, we've already on Monday, we've got the mandatory meeting ready for the kids, and I look forward to getting those guys here and meeting them, putting some faces to names. And got to work with a lot of them over the years, mostly when they were a little bit younger, and, you know, now I'm being told they're big and grown up. So, should be, should be a lot of fun, and I look forward to it and appreciate the opportunity a lot. I did bring a big crowd. I gotta, I was told anytime you get a podium in a sports setting, you definitely gotta make sure you thank your family and your mom for getting you here. So, I can't be anymore thankful, appreciate it. So, look forward to a great season. Look forward to, you know, really putting the program forward here and, you know, getting the youth involved a lot more than it has been, and doing what we can. So, thank you again, I appreciate it.
Congratulations. And I heard mandatory meeting for baseball players on Monday, is that what I heard? Monday, 2:20, okay. I need a motion to hire Bethany Sprouls as a parent educator, subject to assignment and per the terms and conditions of the current MESPA agreement retroactive to November 18, 2024. Excuse me. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. I need a motion to hire Hayden Bajillion and Starlene Bajillion as parent educators, subject to assignment and per the terms and conditions of the current MESPA agreement, and pending receipt of all required clearances, medical exams, and ACT 168, 126 verifications. All those in favor say aye. Oh, I'm sorry.
Are these related to anybody that's on board? Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding regarding two-hour delay procedures between the McGuffey School District and McGuffey Educational Support Personnel Association as presented. Any questions or discussions?
Uh, yes, real quick, can, I mean, we can't just leave this up to the administration to ask them to arrive safely, however long that may take, and then not dock their pay? I mean, I don't think it's necessary to dock their pay if they're late for work up to and including two hours because the weather's bad.
Am I, maybe I misunderstood, but I thought the MOU was to help clean up the language in the contract as it stands, is that correct? Or did my, I misunderstand that? So that we wouldn't dock their pay?
No, if they're two hours late, they get docked two hours of pay.
They do not get paid for two hours if they were not here. So, what this MOU is asking again, so the board consider based on the MOU right now, the MOU has that they come in, even if there's a two-hour delay. And I've always preached safety, safety, safety for everyone. So, what they're asking in this MOU is one of two things. They give the option to either come in and receive the two hours' pay, or come in when they feel that they can come in, and that could take up the two hours. I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, that would be my suggestion.
Are we re-keeping docking them?
No, my suggestion would be leave it up to the administration that if they're okay with them arriving safely, even up to two hours, as long as they make it here on time, that there's no penalty.
Well, the only thing is, and I don't have the contract directly in front of me, and unless you're able to speak to it, I believe the language is such that that's the case.
They're hourly anyway.
Yeah.
And you are negotiating the MESSPA contract coming up, so this MOU would be in place for this winter, and you can address it in your contract coming up?
Uh, this came from the MESSPA, that group.
But are they physically punching a time clock?
They have, no, not an actual physical time clock, but they keep their hours that is overseen by the ability of instance, so they have that time.
Their current contract actually has language in it right now that states they are to be here no matter the delay, which is what I thought.
That's what I'm saying, can't we just make the MOU say that they get here whatever time, as long as they can arrive safely, but they have to be here within the two hours up to, including the two-hour delay?
But still get paid for their time not here?
Just leave, yeah, the professional staff and everybody else does.
So, if I'm understanding you, you wanna take out basically clause two, under two? Does that read utilize the two-hour delay without compensation and sacrifice the time as unpaid time? You wanted to get rid of that sentence, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I just didn't understand what you were asking at first.
I personally don't see a need for this MOU. I think it's a management decision. Dr. Ober has the ability to do whatever he feels best. I don't understand why they wanted it in writing, personally. I mean, you said-
I'm sorry.
So, Jeff, I know, and Jeff actually fits on it.
I'm part of that.
Can you come up to the audience? I'm sorry to put you on the spot.
That's okay. I was raising my hand. Jessica, I don't know if you need me to explain who I am. Jessica, I'm the special ed secretary, I'm part of MESSPA. One of the reasons, maybe not the only reason, but one of the reasons was because we have a lot of parents that are also paras, that their children couldn't come to the buildings at 8 o'clock with them when we had two-hour delays. So, they wanted the option to stay home with their child during two-hour delays. So, that was some of the reasons for that.
I just don't think they should dock your pay, is what I'm saying.
I don't have anything to say about that, I just wanted to explain to you why it was asked for. It wasn't necessarily because, me, yes, of course, we want everybody to get here safely, but that wasn't just the sole reason to ask.
As long as I've been here, parents and secretaries have to come on time. So, that's the way it's always been.
And just for the-
So, now Dr. Ober gave the option, and now they want an MOU because people that have more-
Well, and to be clear, the administration cannot just make a decision when it violates a contract. Yes.
I don't think anybody's gonna agree with that, if they-
Well, working hours are, so the question, the question I would answer is why there's an MOU? It's working hours, and that isn't management rights, that actually is terms and conditions of employment that is bargained for. So, there would need to be an MOU, especially if the contract does state, you know, let's say 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM are your working hours, you need to be here for those working hours. If you're going to deviate from that, you would need an MOU to do it, certainly up to you, whether you wanna make that compensated or uncompensated time.
So, then I would say back to you, Mr. Vanata, if you would like to offer a motion to amend the motion to get rid of statement two.
Well, statement two goes away, then there's only statement one that says they have to be here on time, so.
Well, so then you wanna say they can utilize the two-hour delay, so they can either attend work at the regular start time and work the full eight hours, period?
Or utilize the two-hour delay without penalty.
Without penalty, yes. Is that okay?
Yes.
And that's, you're offering that as a motion to amend?
Yes, I'll make that motion to amend it to say, utilize the two-hour delay without penalty.
My mission to the entire staff-
Wait, I'm sorry, point of order. We have a motion on the floor, so I need a second to that motion before we can discuss further. Actually, can we discuss something else, or do we have the middle amendment?
You can discuss the amendment.
Okay. Do I have a second for, okay, now we can discuss.
Sure. So, I mean, in my time here, as Laura said, it was not, never an option. And I think that's what's led to the discussions that MESSPA's had, because I've said, if I'm calling to her to lay that it's a good reason for that, and I've asked that they take that, knowing full well that if you're someone that falls under this particular contract language, you could be forfeiting an hour or two of your pay. And so, what they were asking for, up until we just changed it to, was to have an option that was in there, because it, they really wanted it to be clarified in the language that they have in the contract. I was saying as much, but contractually, they're being held to that language. So, they have not received pay for the hours they're not here, that's correct.
Do they have an option to use, like, their personal time? Or, not for, and there are-
I mean, I understand you may not want to, but I didn't know if that was maybe an option in the past.
Why, that's kind of why they're asking.
Because everyone's contract has a little different language to it.
Well, and honestly, I mean, if you're talking about maintenance who may be needing to get here to put salt down and clean the water. I'm just saying, if you ask a question, they're all different depending on the, so I think that's the reason for the clarification. So, just to be clear, the most current motion is for the amendment to the MOU, so that it would state that on days where a delay is called by the district, the support staff will have the following options. One, attend work at the regular start time and work the full eight-hour workday, or, two, utilize the two-hour delay without penalty. Can you make a motion to amend the amendment?
I don't-
Maybe the best bet is to table this and let Dr. Ober go back to the table with MESSPA.
Or tomorrow.
Yeah, I mean, so-
Well, we only have two, two weeks, so our next meeting-
What is it you wanna change?
Because my, in the corporate world, a lot of companies have shifted to, and I know this is very different from education, but a lot of companies have shifted to a flex schedule. But if you're late, you either make up the time, or you use your personal time. Two hours, four hours, eight hours, whatever it is. If you're not there, you either take it unpaid, or you use your personal time. And actually, most places force you, if you're not there, you have to use your PTO until it's gone. But that's what I'm saying, is that's, that's my suggestion is-
I think before we get too far in the weeds, those are very different ideas. Mr. Vanata's idea is that they, you give them the flexibility of either coming in at 8:00 or coming in at the two-hour delay, no penalty to the hourly rate that they get, they get paid for the full eight hours. Your idea is that, that they can use, decide to come in at 2:00, but they have to make up the two hours.
Or use their personal time.
Well, and I'm just gonna say, so that's a very different thing, so I understand-
Kind of like, that's why I was asking.
From, from the board, like, what's the majority of the board leaning? Like, do you think we need that more, or are you good with Mr. Vanata? You like Mr. Vanata, Mr. Leisure?
I think we're looking at, just also too, just thinking back to last year, it was less than a handful of times of two-hour delay.
I, I understand that, but-
It's not gonna be, yeah.
If you're not working, you don't get paid, though. I mean, that cuts into the budget, and so, I get that the grace period should be there, I agree with that, but I don't think you should be paid for your time when you're not- But this is to kinda get an idea of the majority of the board. So, Mr. Leisure?
I'd say table it.
Mrs. Robarney?
I like Mr. Vanata's idea.
You like Mr. Vanata's idea. Mr. Kern?
I say table it.
Three, one, two, three, okay. I know, I'm trying to think of my head. Um, Mrs. Lypard?
I, I say table it.
Mr. Thomas?
I'm fine with Aaron's idea. I feel like you're table, eager for work, but open for the weather.
Okay. Mrs. Fry?
I would say table it.
You're tabling it. And my vote is Mr. Vanata's, so that's five, cut to four. So, going back to Mr. Vanata's motion, for to approve the MOU, so that the language is that on a day where a delay is called by the district, the support staff will have the following options. One, attend work at the regular start time and work the full eight-hour workday, or, two, utilize the two-hour delay without penalty. So, you need a roll call, or are we good?
Well, we can discuss it now, though, right? Since we did-
You can vote on the amendment.
We have to vote on the amendment first.
Go ahead.
So, that was the motion, we got a second, we're gonna vote on the amendment to the motion. Roll call, or are we good to do a roll? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. I heard two. Abstentions? Motion carries. So, now we vote on, well, no, we can vote on-
We can vote on the amendment.
We voted on it, so the other one's dead because the amendment passed. Correct.
You voted, you did, you voted to amend the motion.
Yes.
So, now you need to vote on the motion.
And now we have discussion-
Doesn't the motion become dead because we voted on it?
Okay. Wait, did you have discussion on the motion?
I do.
Okay.
Um, Dr. Ober, roughly, approximately, how many employees would this affect?
Uh, great question. I'm gonna, I'm gonna let the Lord just give me sort of a-
So, is it safe to say we're over 50?
No.
Close, we're close, no, I don't think it's that many.
See, my only hesitation is, then we're paying for 50 people not to be here.
Correct.
Yeah, that's a lot of-
Well, what did you say, 117 teachers? Yeah, so.
The teachers don't have to come in.
They're in a different contract.
They come in at a late time, yeah.
And their contract is being renegotiated coming up, correct?
MESSPA?
Yeah.
Well, actually, not this group.
Okay.
This is MESSPA, two of them are gonna be, yeah, that's gonna be a different group altogether. And that's, and that's something where, like, like, Mrs. Thomas said, there's a group there that you can't do that for, that would be your custodian or cleaners, or here cleaning up the roads and those kind of things. So, there's certain groups that can't benefit from it.
Yeah, but they get a perk too, they get overtime.
Right.
Well, yeah, we help them, yeah.
To me, though, that's something that their organization, and they should-
Yeah, that's right.
They, well, the one we are discussing right now, they should bring that to the bargaining table, next contract.
So, we're basically giving away something that is already contractually agreed to?
Yes.
My question would be, why would you do that before negotiation?
No, 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 this is a different group. Right, but what you're saying is this has already been agreed to when it's their time.
Okay, I don't, I don't think we can have collective bargaining discussions.
Technically, we are getting into collective bargaining, and it's executive, so again, I would recommend tabling it, but that's my recommendation.
We would discuss in the executive session. Correct.
Madam President, I'll make a motion to table it.
Second. Okay, all those in favor of tabling it, say aye.
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 Opposed? Roll call, please. This is to table it. Definitely.
We'll be tabling because we voted on the amendment already, so it kind of is a moot point.
I said this too.
No, you're, you're voting, you're tabling the MOU, whether to approve the MOU. You amended the motion and amended the MOU to include Mr. Vanata's language.
So, now we're voting on, you're tabling-
Voting on the MOU at all.
Okay.
So, that's what's on-
And why are all the discussions?
Correct, that's what's on the table, is to vote, table that.
Well, before we vote, I mean, if you have, yeah.
I don't know, I think it's kind of unfair to do these things, because we have a whole group of secretaries and paraeducators, para-professionals that provide tons for the school district, and we're gonna sit here and try to nickel and dime over two hours, when we know that two-hour delays are pretty minimal in grand scheme of things. Now that I've said that, we're gonna have kind of none this year, but, I mean, when you, when you think about it, and our teachers are already getting it, I just feel like the secretaries and paras should have the same opportunity, in my opinion.
The teachers and paras should have parity between their contracts, I would agree.
Yes.
It's a very good point.
So, again, a roll call, a yes or no on tabling it. Miss Fry? Yes. Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mr. Leisure?
No.
Ms. Lypard? No. Mr. Lawrence? No. Table? This is just a table. Correct. She said no. Mr. Thomas?
No.
Mr. Vanata?
No.
Ms. Japp? No. So, it does not get tabled. So, now we need to have the vote on approving the MOU, as the language was amended by the previous vote. Am I the only one who's confused? So, all those in favor-
Can we have the motion read, so we know what we're doing?
Approve the memorandum of understanding regarding the two-hour delay procedures between the McGuffey School District and McGuffey Educational Support Personnel Association as presented. As presented now, the language is that they, I'm sorry, the actual language-
Section two.
Two. I closed it. On days where a delay is called by the district, the support staff will have the following options. One, attend work at the regular start time and work the full eight-hour workday, or, two, utilize the two-hour delay without penalty. Or two, utilize the two-hour delay without penalty. All those in favor of the MOU, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstentions. Motion carries.
Yep.
Eight, one. I need a motion to approve Mrs. Chelsea Mooney, as a substitute teacher, para educator, secretary, food service employee, retroactive to October twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-four. No move. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Motion carries. I need a motion to approve Natalie Hamilton as an emergency day-to-day substitute teacher for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year. No move.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions. Motion carries. I need a motion to approve, is it Healan? Pinkerton and Ray Lombardi as additional substitute teachers for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year, pending receipt of all required clearances, Act one twenty-six and Act one sixty-eight verification. No move.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Motion carries. I need a motion to approve Jordan Weaver as an additional substitute employee, retroactive to October twenty-eighth, twenty... Yes, twenty-twenty-four, uh, for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year. Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Motion carries. I need a motion to approve Nicole Wagers as an additional substitute secretary for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year, retroactive to November eighteenth, twenty-twenty-four.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Motion carries. Need a motion to approve Jennifer Anderson, Tara.
Debeena.
Debeena, I'm sorry, and Kayla Harding as additional substitute secretary, para educator for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year, pending receipt of all required clearances and Act one sixty-eight verification.
No move.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Motion carries. Need a motion to approve James Horner, Ray Euler, and Brenda Brewer as drivers for first students for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year, pending receipt of all required clearances as presented. No move.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Motion carries. Need a motion to approve Emily Chambers and Roger Russell as drivers for DGNC for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year, pending receipt of all required clearances as presented.
No move.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Motion carries. Next, we will be on, um, M one. Need a motion to adopt resolution twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five, number one, as presented.
No move.
Any discussion or questions? Correct. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Motion carries. Need a motion to approve the agreement between McGuffey School District and Invo Healthcare Associates for special education-related services for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year, as presented. No move. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Motion carries. Need a motion to approve payment to Andrews and Price for the submitted invoice with the billing date of October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four, in the amount of three thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars.
No move. Second.
All those, I'm sorry, any discussions or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Motion carries. The facilitative youth reports, Dr. Ober?
Madam President, uh, twenty-two by community, uh, mo, the majority of it was the girls' youth basketball. We did have a meeting of the McGuffey class of eighty-four, as well as McGuffey wrestlers' business.
Thank you. The budget extension report for the month of October is there for your review. The cafeteria report for the month of October is there for your review.
I have a question about the cafeteria report.
Okay.
Um, it says the district enrollment, the one thousand five hundred and sixty-seven. If, if the district is receiving the free breakfast and lunches for the whole district, why does it still include the free eligible students? Like, the amount of students that are eligible for free lunches, if all of the students are eligible?
They still have to track them, I would say. They still have to be recorded through the system because CEP is, um, your only eligible for CEP is a certain number of years, and you have to be reevaluated, and you're reevaluated still based upon the true number of free and reduced lunches.
I see, okay.
So, that's a number that always has to stay current, anyway, because you'll need that number for other things. So, like, if you're applying for certain grants, it may ask you for that number. Or when Dr. Godwin was talking about the multiplier for, um, socially disadvantaged, you need that number.
Right, right.
So, you still need to track it for other things.
Circumstance, because the whole district ha, just happens to qualify.
It still has.
It's not permanent.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Um, the P-card funding summary is there for your review. Do we have a solicitor's report?
There's no solicitor's report, Madam President.
Do we have a Western Area Career Technology Center report?
Um, yes. We, um, talked about, we just had a meeting yesterday, um, they do a wonderful Thanksgiving dinner for their November meeting. Um, so, we talked about the different grant opportunities that, that they've submitted for, um. You see here, there was one we just got. They just got a two-year, uh, PCP grant for two years, for seventy thousand dollars. Um, it wasn't advised on what they're using that for specifically. I can always find out if somebody would like to know. Um, but I thought that was, that was good information, and they're still working on awaiting the final contract for engineering for, um, shop growth, they want to build on, too. So, um, other than that, the student of the month was, um, Charkers Houston student, um, Jack Yellow. Um, he's, he's, he's doing great, and he did a program, trying to remember what it was called now. It was like a co-op program with Washington Hospital, and they actually asked him to stay on the health ward over the summer. Um, so, he's, he's doing well, but that, that was all.
Thank you.
Mooney, do they have their school calendar on their website?
Yes.
They do?
Yes, their website, we've had that conversation, it's a little not user-friendly, not user-friendly.
Yeah, I know, um.
That's how I always describe it. They, yes, and they are on Facebook, um, and I do share their, their weekly updates. The weekly updates are here as well.
Right.
For you. They list, like, the upcoming news and things down the bottom left-hand corner also. So, if there's something coming up, it's listed there. Um, but their, the calendar itself is on the website.
I'm thinking, I'm trying to coordinate.
Asking for, like, holiday dates.
Yeah, because I think they have school.
They do sometimes when we.
Dates with our vacation. I think there are two days.
I can't remember what.
We, we try to, at the beginning of, when we produce our calendars, we share them with, with Mr. Malanovich, and it's never completely, but we try to.
I think there's two days, the, the last two days of our Christmas vacation, I think, Western Area has school, that Thursday and Friday.
Yeah, and I know that's happened in the past, where there's days that we, the district has off that they don't. Um, and they're required to get there on the road, is that correct?
Well, I know the last time that we.
When we don't have.
We had tr, we had a bus stop once, the last day, the last time that we were off. There was a bus that had transportation, but I'm not sure about.
Maybe I'm wrong.
But I don't know about these, these two days. We will?
Maybe clarify for them.
That Thursday and Friday of our vacation.
Mr. Wilson, yes, we will have a bus?
Yeah.
But they have to get here.
Yeah, but we have to get our students here.
That may be what I was thinking of.
Yes, that's correct.
Students have to provide their own transporta, or parents, families.
Yeah, here.
Here, to get on the bus to go to Western Area. That must be what I was thinking of. Okay.
Thank you.
Um, wait, I skipped something somewhere.
School board.
Oh, yes, I did.
Yes, we.
Do we have a, um, report for Pennsylvania School Board Association?
Okay, uh, just a couple of things. First, I want to say thank you for the opportunity to go and spend the day, um, with the group at the IU. That was a wealth of information, and I think it was all valuable, and, and we've been utilizing it already. So, I, I think, I really appreciated getting to go and having that opportunity. Um, secondly, these, one of the things I mentioned the last two months, and they brought this up in that Saturday meeting, is those micro courses. There's a list of them, and every area that you can ma, can imagine, and they're less than ten minutes on video. You watch a short video, it's, it's less than ten minutes. It, it does make it really easy to get some of your, uh, hours in there, and it's, it's valuable information. So, I wanted to remind everybody of that. Supposed to remind everybody, the end of the year is coming, and we have to do all of our training and make sure it's all up to date. For January twenty-twenty-five, there's a big push on, they have a, a big webinar on appeals and open records, um, of, uh, right-to-knows. So, that would be very good to go, but the one thing that I have a problem with, it's in the middle of the day.
It's like noon to one o'clock, but, but that's on January thirty-first, if anyone's interested.
Another thing, I mentioned this before a couple of times, and this came up Saturday also. I think our schools should submit this grant schools. We, um, they send that out all the time, and the lady there said, any school can be entered into that. I think we should be entered into that, and have, and, and Dr. Ober would, would enter us into it, I believe. I mean, will you direct somebody else?
Actually, anyone who can enter, uh, uh, nominations to grant schools, then they, they come back and, and then try to find out the fifth category.
It doesn't have to be.
Okay, well, I'll listen to us. Okay, and then it'll come back to you, then. Or, what, I, I mean, I just think that we need to be on that list. And I would, I also would like to see them come to visit and, and speak to the board, because that's something they offered, and I don't know that, since I've been here, they've ever come and spoken to the board. I know they send certificates and things, but, but they don't really ever come and address this. So, I look kind of like, and I do know somebody would have to contact them, because she said that, the lady that was there. That's what I understood. Another thing, uh, that's coming up, this is December the sixth, again, of course, again, it's twelve to one, but it is building a stronger school community, and if you're interested at all in, we're all interested in this, I'm sure here, solar power. I think I'm passing on that one, but, uh, a lot of places are doing a lot more with solar energy. So, if that's something that you're interested in, that's another thing that they're offering.
We don't get enough days of sunlight. I actually know people who have had, or tried to put it in and had to get rid of it, because we don't get enough days of sunlight.
That would be a group, but, um, that was it, thank you. And thanks again for the opportunity to go, I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Wow, at this time, we will have public comment on agenda or non-agenda items, chief.
Madam President, we call Jessica Peel, Claysville.
Hi again, uh, Jessica Peel, Claysville Borough. Um, I'm, again, also a, a employee of the district, I am the special ed, uh, secretary here for the district. I also have two children here. Um, I wanted to come tonight, um, just to share a few positive, um, things that I'm seeing around the district. I know you guys usually hear the negatives, and that's not just here, that's, you know, just the way the world tends to work. But I think it's always good to highlight the positive as well. Um, so, there were a few changes made this last school year, um, with our new supervisor of special education. He brought back, um, with your, uh, support, brought back the gifted teacher, um, Mrs. Horgan, she's doing amazing, amazing things. Those kids are excelling, she's challenging them. They recently got to go, uh, see an open-heart surgery, uh, downtown Pittsburgh. She's finding amazing, um, experiences for these kids. Um, another positive, another change, was our autism support classroom. Um, again, amazing, wonderful things are coming out of that classroom. I get to see those kids because it's down at Claysville, and that's where our offices are at. So, I get to see those kids almost on a daily basis. I get, I have one kiddo that he'll come down for his walks, and, um, he'll come and visit me, I have little treats that he comes in. Um, but he is just doing fabulous things. He's, um, come along so far, you know, interacting with others like we had never seen before. Um, so, I want to thank the board for allowing that program to come to Claysville, uh, along with our emotional, uh, support program at Claysville now. Again, it's, we're, we're doing a lot of good for kids that, uh, we weren't, it's not that we weren't doing good before, but they were kind of pumped into the life skills classroom, um, where they weren't getting the services that they needed. So, I wanted to come tell you the good that I'm seeing from these programs, and say thank you for allowing those programs to come to Claysville, Anthony McGuffey.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Second, Vicki Jordan, Buffalo Township.
All right, I'm ready. Vicki Jordan, Buffalo Township, you guys really threw me off with this whole MOU vote. So, I'm just gonna say real quick, did you just give up bargaining power for the next contract?
Well, we don't, we don't do this.
I'm making my point.
At this point, a rhetorical question that we cannot ponder.
Okay, and then, so now you're gonna pay forty-plus para educators, who, why would you show up early when you're getting paid? For one, but the parents whose kids go to both techs on days we're not in school, they're not getting compensated to bring their kids to the school, they're not getting compensated to get off early to pick their kids up. Boo, I'm just gonna say boo. All right, I want to move on to the matter at hand. First of all, thank you all for your service on the board, I do appreciate you, and happy Thanksgiving. I left here following last month's meeting feeling challenged by the attempt being made to stop religious prayer before our meeting, and since I did, I decided to share my thoughts. First of all, our founding fathers' intention was to keep the government out of church, not the church out of government. They came here to be free of religious persecution from the government they were fleeing. Those who express that the separation of church and state means you can't pray or express your religious views publicly, need to educate themselves on the true meaning. Our founding fathers never intended for prayers off of the door where we worship, and God has always been an integral part of our government, dating back all the way to the beginning. The first two paragraphs of the Declaration of Independence reference God and our Creator. It was President Thomas Jefferson, who famously said in an eighteen oh-two letter that the Establishment Clause should present, should represent a wall of separation between the church and state. The provision prevents the government from establishing a state religion, like the Church of England, and prohibits, prohibits from favoring one faith over another. And just a reminder, there is nowhere in the Constitution the phrase "separation of church and state." With that said, let's move on to a few more examples of religion within our government. Let's start with our currency, "In God We Trust," a phase that has been used in the United States dating back to seventeen forty-eight. Congress approved adding "In God We Trust" to the one-cent and two-cent coins in February twenty-two of eighteen sixty-four. On July eleventh, Congress passed H.R. six nineteen, and was signed into law by President Dwight Eisenhower to mandate that "In God We Trust" be included on all U.S. currency. The history of "In God We Trust" becoming an official motto of the United. The history of "In God We Trust" becoming an official motto of the United States spans nearly a century, originally used on coins during the Civil War and later adopted as the official motto of the United States in 1956. The meaning of "In God We Trust" denotes that the political and ethic economic prosperity of the nation is in God's hands. And now, how about the United States House of Representatives and Senate for another example? Are you aware that both our upper and lower chambers of Congress start every session with a religious prayer? This has been happening since 1789 and was upheld in 2016 when an atheist named Baker sued for being denied the ability to deliver a secular invocation. Baker was the co-president of the Freedom from Religion Foundation, a nonprofit that promotes non-belief and works to keep state and church separate. The higher court ruled that the court cannot order the chaplain to allow Baker, Parker, to deliver a secular invocation because the House permissively limits the opening prayer to religion. In recent court rulings, the Supreme Court decides.
Are you gonna make me call you off?
I'm honest, son, seriously. In recent court rulings, the Supreme Court decided that action intended to maintain the separation of church and state had instead infringed separate rights to free speech or the free exercise of a religion also protected by the purpose of image.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna have.
So when the Congress, upper and lower chambers change prayer, then maybe we should talk, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's why I want seven minutes at the end.
Thank you.
Madam President, last, Kristy Thorin, East Finley Township.
Could be I every time, east west, or east Finley or western?
East.
East, I don't know why, I can't remember that.
I was telling you Buffalo last time.
Well, that's been a minute or two.
Okay, um, real quick, uh, not sure wha, wha, where you guys are thinking it's okay for, to pay people that aren't actually where they're supposed to be working, it makes absolutely no sense to me. Um, if you look at it, I just did the math for it, 40 people, say, two hours, $15 an hour, that's $1,200 a day. I mean, that's a lot of money. If you guys are concerned about whether you're raising taxes or whether you're not raising the taxes, and just everything, if you're gonna focus on the money aspect of saving money and not overspending and this and that, uh, that should have been a little bit more of a concern than it was, it just seemed that it was, it wasn't, didn't seem very concerning, um, for a lot of you. Um, thank God Trump won.
Throwing that out there.
Just throwing that out there, I, I, I meant, I meant to say it last month at the end of my speech, and I didn't, so, um, anyways, thank God. Um, and hopefully R-Robber Kennedy actually cleans up this food situation. Uh, uh, Dr. Ober, you had said something about the USDA and that it had been authorized through the USDA about the food program that you guys follow, which I've gone down this rabbit hole in finding out who actually, uh, does that, which makes no sense because it's people that don't even have anything to do with food. But you do understand that these studies, some studies aren't even, not even done on things, on food, on things that we consume, like, for example, I was just telling somebody how Doritos has MSG in it, which is an endocrine disruptor, it causes cancer, it messes up, messes with your DNA, and we feed these to our kids, we feed this crap to our children, not me, it's not in my house, I won't buy it, I don't waste my money on that garbage, but it just makes absolutely no sense to me that these children are here to learn, and we're feeding them crap. You guys are feeding them crap in the morning. How much sugar intake that they have is insane in the morning, and then you expect them to sit still, makes no sense. Anyways, um, remember that we do have, I was just reminded that we do have a bullying issue in this school, and I encourage teachers and staff to stay vigilant, uh, pay attention, and continue to stay active in preventing as much as possible as we pass the one-year anniversary of losing a child in our district. Uh, I was hoping that we could be a little further, further along with the bullying issue. Um, another thing, the children, now, when, like, somebody had brought up the two-hour delay, and then they don't have VOTEC, and then for the kids, mm, even if they have it, I ain't driving there, if VOTEC doesn't have a two-hour delay, and you guys do, I'm not driving there, but, um, so, it has been brought to my attention as of last year, and I think the year before that, that whenever VOTEC does not have school, the children sit in the auditorium? They sit in the auditorium for hours? Is that correct? I mean, they get in, they have their first period class, and then normally they get on the bus at like, what, 9 o'clock? And so they just sit from like 9 to noon in the auditorium? That's absolutely ridiculous, there should be something better for these children to be doing. I don't send my kid to school, my child in VOTEC, I do not send him to school on days that VOTEC doesn't have school. I'm not gonna have him sit there for hours when he could be doing stuff at home productive. Like, it just makes no sense to me that that's what you guys have these kids doing when VOTEC doesn't have school. I just think that there's better things that these kids could be doing. I mean, I, just, there needs to be something different than these kids just sitting for hours when VOTEC doesn't have school, so. But have a great Thanksgiving, I hope everybody has a safe and fulfilling Thanksgiving, and I will see you next month.
Thank you.
Two weeks from now.
That's all, Madam President.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion to adjourn the school board meeting.
No move. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries, and we are adjourned at 10:18 PM. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.